Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in heaven, dear Lord God, it's once again that we humbly approach your throne of grace to give you thanks, our God, for all of your many blessings you bestow upon each and every one of us and upon each and every citizen of Dillon. Dear our God, we ask that you bless our mayor, our city council, our city manager, our city attorney, and all the department heads on tonight as we get it together to make decisions for the betterment of all the citizens of Dillon. And in everything that we do, we pray we be careful to give your name the glory, your name the honor, and your name the praise, but it's in the precious name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
We want to welcome everybody here this evening. Have a motion approved the agenda. On favor, I oppose. Motion approved the minutes from the regular scheduled meeting on March 13th. On favor, I oppose. Next on the agenda, the election of the mayor will be now open for nomination.
I'll make a motion if Ms. Conning will do it again. I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
On favor. I do you, would you do it?
She's been very good on that.
Okay, we've got a second on the favor. I oppose. Thank you. Manny has, every time I've called, she's stepped right up, and I appreciate it, it's made her awesome. Busy sometime, we've got to go, and she's had a great job helping me out. All right. Be open by, say, in April, before I forget, April 29th is the festival of May. We have a big event that day, I think we got three bands that day throughout the time. A lot of the stuff we've done must still be there, probably going to be a bigger event this year, probably, with the pad, Amtrak running again, in fact, I'm riding the Amtrak back for Florence. Huge deal with that.
All I can say.
He volunteered it. My old man was a railroad man, ain't been on the train in a long time. Hey, let me start by the making notice of our baseball soccer fields. My son played on the soccer field about two weeks ago, and that's right below the baseball fields. If you haven't been out there in a while, I know we brought it up, I brought it up a year and a half ago, I think, or about a year ago. It has been a significant improvement out there. First of all, you walk up, the walkway into the park is now all concrete, it's probably 10, 12 feet wide, it's not a little path, never a path, it's very wide. They also poured concrete around the building, so almost everywhere out there, not everywhere, but most of the foot traffic is now on concrete out there. Four new scoreboards. We don't have sponsorships of those scoreboards to date, as I'm aware of. We've got four new scoreboards, it's landscaping out there, I think we build up the, when you go in at pay or pick up the program, a shed or a house or shelter has been constructed. The grass looks fantastic, the field's all top notch. So where I thought we were following the low average with other municipalities in this area, I think we have now stepped back up to the top level, or not the top, right close to it. So it was needed, and it was done, and I think all those involved and all the hard work that went into it, it shows, and I was proud of it. Same way with the soccer fields. These teams that come here are very impressed with the turf out there, what they play on. You don't really see that turf in that good a shape in the places I've been. It's very nice. We do need to work on that scoreboard, though.
Yeah, those are coming.
Okay. The actual building itself has been painted, something's been done to it, it has a design on the building, it looks like all the way around, from what I notice.
On the soccer field?
The, the baseball. It looks different. I know there's work inside on the bathroom.
In the bathrooms, on the exterior, we haven't done anything.
Well, take that back, yes, we did. Due to the hurricane, we got a new roof, so that's, that's different. Something, I thought, the outside of that building itself, but maybe it was the roof that, I knew something was different, but it looks better. We had our first Tuesday week ago, downtown revitalization committee meeting. I had 12 members, I've got 13. One that I added, I couldn't reach him, was Roger Sloan, as y'all everyone knows Roger Clapham. It went very well, 11 of 13 members were there, we had Wanda Self that was there, why wouldn't she talk?
No, she's with Ms. Janie Lake, they're here tonight.
Yes, we want to back there. Thank y'all for coming. But she, she does, vitally important being there, her input is appreciated, and going The members somewhat introduced themselves, we met without an hour, I kept it to about an hour. They're excited, I'm excited, we all are. We'll probably initially meet on a monthly basis, the first two or three months, and then we'll come back, I'm gonna bring you guys, the city council, what the committee wants to do going forward, for your approval, your input, we want to evaluate. But I'll tell you what I'm gonna bring to it. You know, we got the facade grant, and I think the facade grant now is open for applications.
Yes.
It's open for application. We don't have an application for the facade grant yet, okay? Don't hear to hurry, who knows that one? If you don't, the people that have gotten the facade grants before will go in and get them again, okay? But I'm gonna come back to council on the budget for fiscal year 17 and 18, and request two $15,000 in-house grants for upfitting the building, okay? Now, it'll be a pretty stringent qualification process, it'll be on a match basis, and they do the work, they spend the money on a reimbursement type of setting. But I hope that y'all will see the need to do some seed money, up to two per year, and we'll just go forward on how that goes, and what we want to do going forward contingent on budget. I don't think this downtown's gonna get anywhere without any incentives on the building, okay? It's just not. I think that and the maintenance and appearance ordinance are gonna be the two, the two big deals with this. Some of the other things discussed were maybe water and sewer incentives, not from anything the city's gonna do from waiving fees, 'cause I understand we can't with SRF loans, but I don't even know if we have a need or hook up these plans, that we probably don't, but maybe we can do something there if that were to arise. Is that, can you handle some? We have that water tank.
Well, you got water tank being one, and the river bridge.
We borrowed that one, we did. Some other things, just maybe a business license incentive, maybe some sign grants, some sign incentives on signs, advertising, all kind of things we could do, just a matter of what we want to do. But I think some seed money for the buildings is very important, and it's not gonna, you know, it's only gonna improve our main street, it's gonna pay for itself over the years to come. I don't think we're gonna have much success without it, I just don't.
If I could just ask you some talk. Ms. Maggie, you got money available right now for people to try to get facades?
Yes, sir.
Is anybody taking advantage of it?
No, sir.
Nobody's taking advantage?
Two people have called me and asked me, the new owner of Young, what used to be Young World, she's got a signed design, it's been approved, and she's just gotta get her figures together.
So, is there any way to get the business owners, make them aware that we got the money? How are we doing that? That's why this is what I'm asking. How are we letting them know that we got the money available for them to be able to get the facade?
When I get a phone system that works, which we're working on that right now, I can't, I can't take a voicemail, so if I'm not actually in that office to pick up that phone, it's very frustrating for people not to be able to get a hold of me. The minute I get that, then we'll advertise it, so they can then call me.
Okay, until then, maybe it might be likely to freeze on giving any grant, until that, till your phone system's updated.
Okay.
Would you agree? Well, then, you know, at your meeting last week, there was discussion about how we're gonna, how are we gonna communicate these opportunities to the property owner or the business owner? And in those conversations, we also discussed that we need a downtown association, and those folks that were there that night agreed 100%. If we ever can get a downtown association or merchant group started, that's gonna be our communication. And if we can put it in the newspaper, we can put it on Facebook, but unless you see people face to face, that's the only way you're gonna be able to communicate. So I think there's plans to go forward and do a better job than what we've been doing.
I talked with Benny about, I have no way of getting who actually owns a business in, I can get the, who owns the business, who owns the buildings, but not who owns the businesses or who's in there. Benny is going to a new system, and, is it June 1st, Benny?
I'll have a word with him.
Will be able to, he'll be able to give me a list of just those properties on the historic district. Right now, he'd have to print out every, so, and we'll mail from there.
Well, how much time do you think it's gonna take for you to get your phone lines up, like, you said they're running?
Well, I've been without for two months. It's now happening. It's now happening. I filled out the paperwork Friday.
Okay.
But, but the point is, this has to be a recurring every year thing, this isn't a one year done, or two years of done. I talked with Kay Summerlin at Rotary, they had the facade grant 30 grand years ago, didn't one year successful in this town.
Well, I'm just glad we're increasing the money. Quite helpful.
Oh, yeah. Well, you remember when it was $500, and that's just not enough to do much of anything these days, so.
The money the mayor's speaking of, the $30,000 total, or two grants up to $15,000, that's a suggestion, but that's not also dealing with facade, that's dealing with other issues within that building.
Okay, we still got the $12,000 available?
Yeah.
That's been passed.
Yeah.
So the city, you know, if we go, and y'all grant that, you putting some teeth in this committee and doing incentives on main street that we've never had before, and other cities are doing.
Excellent.
Well, I know you got some other things, right? That's all I have.
Well, first, let me say congratulations both to Dr. Wallace and Councilman Brady, Councilman Ellis for your reelection, four more years for you folks. We do have a vacancy, and now on council, special election is scheduled for June 13th, is that correct?
That's correct.
The books open, file for that seat April 17th. I think it closes on the 27th of April. So we will have a special election in June, then that new appointee will take office in our July meeting, because I think that's after our regular council meeting in June, so that person will be sworn in in July. I put in your packet, I discussed in my letter to you that this is the time that you usually look at board appointments, if you want to replace someone, this is a good time to do it, 'cause your terms, terms are starting over. If you have that list, then what we're, what we're looking at is the planning and zoning board, and zoning board fields. If anybody wants to replace anybody, this would be the time to do it. You don't have to confirm those people who are already sitting there, 'cause unless you want to replace them, there's, you don't have to do anything.
And I've got one replacement that I'd like to recommend to council. Jay David has served on this planning commission for at least probably 14 years, if not longer, and has done a great job, but I feel there's a need for a contractor on that board now. And I've talked to Jay, and I've talked to Trey Wallace, who lives on Jefferson Street, and Trey is willing to take that position on the planning field, so I'd like to recommend Trey for that. And thank Jay for his many years of great service to that board, he's really been very devoted to it over the years, and done a good job.
Think you need a motion.
Second. On favor?
I oppose.
She cares.
Could I ask you about the board of government?
Sure.
You got Ms. Virginia Jones, she's not on this list, but she's on the board. She's no longer able to go, I understand that, but how many do you have to have on that committee? Can you get by with just four?
Should be at least seven.
At least seven?
Yes.
And right now, the four that's on the list, there are four that can come, two, three, four, five. Well, you got six on the, on the board to show the four on this. Four, five, I'm sorry, five.
What are the, what are we looking for, folks on the board of government?
Pretty much contractors, running electrical, heating and air builders.
Yeah, I'm sure. Is to recommend.
That's true.
For next month.
Yes.
Now, they have many. Look, all they got to do is.
Part of the morning once a year. Is that appointed by a council district?
Yes, sir. Not by district, no. No, not by district. What I've just suggested to Benny, next month, maybe come back with some recommendations to council, and then y'all can go from there on that.
Tony Hoss on the tree committee, Steve Moore, that's a Steve Moore I know.
Yeah, he's no longer here. And he was, at that time, he was at Little PD State Park, and that's what we'll try to have someone from there to get back on down. Or anybody got any others? All right, we'll move on. Janet and I and department heads are working on our proposed budget, we're still waiting on some information from department heads, put some numbers together, but as I told you, the last month, the month of last, one of our biggest expenses is gonna be this year, is retirement, due to the fact that the general assembly has determined that they're gonna increase what the employer pays on behalf of every employee to the retirement system. They were talking about increasing it by 2%, if you remember correctly, a month or two ago, I threw out a number, anywhere from $75,000 to $80,000 additional dollars it had cost us, just based on our salaries of that particular debt. Today is that same number, however, I tried to find a day to see if it was passed, but there was a proposal that was presented and passed in the House last week, not sure if it passed in the Senate, where there will be a 2% increase, but the cities, counties, school districts will only be responsible for half of that. So the state will put in the other 1% on our behalf. So, you know, once again, simple math, if we're talking $80,000 at 2% annually, now we're talking somewhere around $40,000 that it could additionally cost us, but I'm not sure for that, if the Senate actually passes it, and if it has gone to the governor's desk for signature. I know they own furlough this week, and I think if, what's it called, crossover?
It passed.
That was last week, so if it didn't get passed last week in the Senate.
It's unlikely.
It's unlikely that it'll pass at all this year, but I think it did go to the Senate, but I'm not sure if it got passed out of the Senate or not. But that's one of the expenses we're looking at, is the retirement system, so it could be upwards to $80,000 out of pocket for the city for all employees, or it could be as low as about $40,000, based on what we're paying today in salaries. I say that if we give an increase in salaries in July, that goes up. So, right now, we're just waiting to find out exactly in the retirement system what that expense is gonna be. Also in your packet, I submitted to you the annual rate study that was done in January of 2017, and the rate study that I presented to you in that packet is stating that we need to increase water and sewer rates by 3.8%. Do you remember this year, that the budget we're in now, we increased it almost 11% I think, with this? This year's rate study is proposing 3.8%. Based on our revenues that we generated so far this year, and prorating it out for the remaining three months, that would bring in about $130,000 additional dollars in revenue in water and sewer next year. So I kinda have, need an idea from you folks, is that the way you want to cut?
What, and that will give us, I was just kinda, that'll give us a 15%.
Yeah, that includes that 15% margin.
Really kinda tap down a lot of funds out of that, we need to go back. What are we doing with the $30,000, you know, the, what are we paying, $90,000 a quarter to SRF?
To SRF, yeah.
Is that money just disappearing?
Well, no, it disappeared, no.
That's a lot of money.
But I mean, that was, that's part of this rate study, 'cause he did the rate study, he does the rate study once we get our audit report back, so it's, it's based on last year's information.
And if I, if I root through, that is, how fast are we replenishing the depreciation fund if we do this?
I don't remember, but you have.
Is that $400,000 a year?
No, 'cause remember, we're not getting depreciation money back from Purdue anymore, understand?
But, you know, and help me with the contract there.
We don't have one.
Okay, all right, so basically, we could charge them outside rate if we wanted to.
Bingo, we could.
Yeah.
And that was something that we're gonna talk about next month, like the song, so it's coming to the table. Yeah, there's, there's no longer a contract law with those folks.
Well, yeah, you know, it's in their best interest for us to be able to handle catastrophic events like we've already had out there on Highway 9, and, you know, we've done that once, and then replaced all that stuff out of the, in the plant.
That's correct.
So do you want to use this?
It's 4% enough, that's what I'm concerned about.
Well, it is for fiscal year 17, it's gonna fund your expenses and your depreciation until a tank comes on in 18, and it's gonna fall short, based on projected rent.
What's the increase, I'm looking at the graph, what's the increase on the high zone?
On 4%.
You're talking.
Well, if you look at the last page, you know, and it shows the gallons used. Right now, let's just look at in-town residential, your base charge is $439 for water, the proposed at roughly 4% is $4.56, so what's that, less than 20 cents? Just on the base rate for water. Sewer rate, base rate is $14.99 now, it'll go up 57 cents, and then per thousand gallons, if you used 6,000 gallons of water and sewer, right now, your bill is $44.70, with the proposed 4% roughly rate increase, you're looking at $46.40, so less than $2 on 6,000 gallons.
You're shocked, you need to look at these comparisons of towns around.
Well, if you remember last year, when Mike Cannon was in here and we talked about it, we're one of the lowest ones.
Yeah, by far.
By far.
Are we $10 less than, I mean, $10 less a month, just on water, and I think another 15 on sewage? About half of what Lada has.
But you just got a lot of people on fixed income, and you don't want to jack it up so high.
Well, that's why you can go up a little bit.
Do it each year.
But I'm not sure catching up to 4%, CPI's running 2.5, 3%, we're not making up any money. Depends on what CPI is running up in, I mean, in engineering stuff is running a lot higher.
Remember, he, and I think he addressed that in here, because, yes. If you look on the second to the last page of exhibit H, he talks about CPI on line 16.
3%.
Yeah, roughly 3%, and remember, this is always, and then he talks about it again on line 32, which is 3%.
We just have to stay on top of it, and.
Yeah, we do this.
We're making a one, what I'm saying is making basically a 1% adjustment is what we're doing.
Basically CPI.
3.8, the CPI at 3, we're making a 0.8%. We're not, we're not gonna stay ahead doing that, especially as far as my highest we You know, I think that, I think that we need to look hard at what it's gonna cost, and not that we need to get there this year, but we need to look hard at what it's gonna cost for us to fund 15% margin so that we can put that away in depreciation. Just my reference. We gotta get back on top of that. So with depreciation, we're running a deficit of about $400,000.
That is correct. Depreciation of equipment.
With depreciation, they're granted. But also, we pay cash for a lot of fix, you know, we pay cash for all that work out of the plant, and that stainless steel.
Plus the $600,000.
Yeah, yeah. But those things are gonna happen, because it's all, I suppose, 20 years old, you know? But I'm just having a hard time figuring out where, you know, $360,000.
In what?
Water tubes.
From the.
Well, I mean, you know, in our budget, we're gonna have $360,000 more available because I paid $90,000 a quarter to SRF.
But now, do we, is that what all our money was?
Yeah, it's all our money. $90,000 was our, was what we paid. They paid $120,000, we paid $90,000.
Yeah, but you've had a lot of expenses.
I understand that. We're talking about budget for next year, I wanna know what's gonna happen in the budget next year with that $360,000.
Well, you got the water tank.
We don't have to start paying that, and that's gonna be a fee, and that's.
That's gonna be, yeah, we won't start paying that.
We're talking, what was the combined, a half a million dollars? That, that payment.
Well, yeah, SRF, the two SRF loans we have right now, $300,000 give or take for the water tank, $500,000 on the relocating of them.
We're talking about $800,000, we do that every 20 years, that's, you know, that's.
Yeah, it's pocket change.
$6,800 a month.
Compared to the old.
Bags. If you look at the interest rate, it probably won't be bad.
Then that's where we'll get to find out, once we complete the budget, we'll see what our projected expenses are.
What I don't wanna do is to get so far into the budget with anticipated goals that don't serve our purpose. I wanna, I wanna start the process, the budget, with goals that, that. And I think that goal should be that sometime in five to seven years, we have replenished that, whatever that magic number is, you know, which we've been kind of asking for for some time from our, from our engineers. You know, what amount of depreciation money do you need for this amount of net worth in water and sewage? This amount of structure? You know, if we've got thirty million dollars in structure, how much, how much reserve do we need in order to be able to, you know? I mean, we ought to have a set amount. They ought to be able to tell me a number, you know, how much should you have in reserve for that kind of? I mean, typically for us, you should have three months in the bank to run a business. I'm sure there's a number of depreciation money that you should have for a gross asset.
Is it typical that the engineer does rate studies for that he's working for?
I didn't.
Hey, if you look at your budget report in water and sewer. I'm reading this right down, make sure I am. Year-to-date revenues, we have collected three million, and we've only spent two point eight million. So right now, we're running ahead.
What's Purdue running a day now?
About a million eight to a million nine.
Yeah. So we're running them now, how much do they pay?
Three seventy-eight per gallon. I think that's pretty good. Three seventy-eight.
In-town, what's, what's?
In-town rate for sewer, two fifty, two forty-seven. And outside is four ninety-six.
Yeah, quite.
But I guess to go further with, with the, with the budget planning is, where do you want the rates to be in water and sewer? Y'all need to tell us.
It's not a matter of where I want the rates, it's where I want, you know, I want, I just don't want to run naked down the street, you know, if, if we have another, you know, sinkhole. We need money to be able to handle those things, you know, on the spot.
I'm all right with the three point first. But I mean, to answer that question, don't you, I know it's not, um, what, I mean, you're missing a whole part of the equation without setting the rate for Purdue, aren't you? Well, my, my, my thing with Purdue, which is going to be at this point in time, depending on what our, once we get all our expenses down, is, is whatever they're paying you now, whatever the increase for every other user, that's what's going to apply to them.
Yeah.
We're in the past, I mean, they were getting increases, but they also got decreases depending on the years. But moving forward, since we're no longer under contract, they'd be treated just as every other user. And whatever that increase would be, they would absorb that increase as well.
I guess, I hear you saying you want to do two to three percent of our CPI? Well, whatever the case. I, I want to know what, one, where, where we need to go, a timeframe where we need, how, you know, to get there, and what it's going to take annually in order to get us back up to where everybody else is and still get to our goal. Yeah, that's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
You know, questions, I think, if we can get us.
Is it okay, I mean, can you get us on the back, because we'll be in May next month on rates?
Yeah, I mean, we, we can go ahead and kind of do, you know, we'll just round it up to four percent, or, and, and just kind of do some, some increases off of that and see what we have and, you know, I was trying to see.
I don't think you just randomly go up.
No, I'm not saying randomly go up. I'm saying to go up based on, based on what we're looking to achieve at the end of the year.
I don't, I haven't heard what we wanted to achieve at the end of the year.
Well, at the end of the year, we want to be, not in the negative, we want to be on the plus side. That's the first.
I don't think that's a lofty goal.
Well, you know.
I think you should do that anyway.
Absolutely.
That's a given.
But we never know at the end of the year what our depreciation costs are going to be based on what we actually purchased from equipment standpoint. That's what gets us on depreciation. That's what drives that number back down. And, and as we've talked before, just using plain numbers, we bring in a million dollars in, in revenue in water and sewer, spend a half a million dollars in expenses, we made a half a million dollars. But then when you throw in a depreciation of, of the equipment, that's where it drops that cash value, even though we don't lose money.
Where does that money go then? It should go in the depreciation fund if it's taken off of your profit. It's not profit, right? It goes into the depreciation fund, that's what I'm saying. I know that it's, it's, it's paperwork, but, and it's paper loss, but it's real money that we made that we aren't showing a profit on, and it should be going into that depreciation fund.
Well, at the end of the year, it goes into.
I don't, we don't, what I'm saying is, is we don't necessarily need to see a fifteen percent profit if we're funding fifteen percent into the depreciation fund. And so we're, we're trying. I think what you're thinking is, is that we're, we're double dipping. We're funding depreciation and getting a fifteen percent margin, I'm not saying that. But I'm saying that all of that money that they say we depreciated, we're going to have to put away for depreciation. But also, we're in the process of growing that depreciation fund. So, you know, we've, we've used depreciation. What we've got to replace this past year's depreciation?
Oh, yeah.
Was it four hundred? I think he mentioned that, that it's something like four hundred thousand.
And, and we can go that route, and we budget whatever the, the audit was from the previous year, and we use four hundred thousand, that would be an additional.
But you understand that if you don't put that money away, that four hundred thousand, at the end of the year, if you don't fund that, even though it's paper loss, you have backed up four hundred thousand dollars. Your, your worth is four hundred thousand dollars less. You've got to put that money away because that fifteen-year-old truck next year isn't going to run, and you're going to have to spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on it to replace it. And that's how we've gotten out of this in the past, you know, we've moved away from that, and I just don't want to see us go back.
I think you ought to go by that audit. That's the true picture.
Pardon?
About the audit.
Yeah.
And, well, I mean, it is, but then it's, you know, it's basically a year and a half old.
I know, yeah.
Well, we just got all this scheduled, and we just started.
Yes, yeah. This is the first year we've gotten back to, one, doing the rate study.
I don't know if y'all have ever seen the list of every municipality in the state with what's charged over the city. We're close to the bottom of the deep, isn't it?
When we talked last year, when we went up eleven percent, and we didn't want to get back in a situation where we had to do eleven percent again. And the reason was, we went, what, three to five years or so without any kind of increase?
A little longer than that.
Okay, and so, I mean, I think for this year, since we did this, we went up eleven, what, eleven eight, tried it four, and then we did it.
Well, what we'll do is, I mean, like I said, we're not completed with our budget yet, and, and we'll have first reading scheduled for next meeting in May. We can tell you then, you know, four percent is either a good thing to do, and here's why, or no, four percent's not good, and here's why, and here's where we need to be based on that time when we think our expenses are.
Well, I think I would like to, for him to give us a realistic goal, where we, what we should have in the fund, and a schedule of how we get there, a time period, and what we need to do in order to get there.
Okay, you don't bring that. Sorry. The rate structure, new fee structure will start in new fiscal year.
Yeah.
Starting July.
That is correct.
All right. See my notes here. At this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Janie Lathan. Ms. Lathan, we've got a contract with her to work on our community block development, community block, community development block grant. She is one of Wallace's, working on a grant to upgrade two of our lift stations, one being beside the Armory, the other one on McKenzie Road down behind the high school football stadium. In our packet, in the new business, is a resolution for an application for this. Janie, you'll kind of give an overview of what takes place there.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor. As Glenn has said, the application itself is a grant from the Department of Commerce under the Community Economic Development Block Grant Program. The max that municipality can apply for is normally around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So the city is putting in a grant for the maximum amount of grant funding that can be received. Normally, a minimum match is of ten percent. In this case, it would be seventy-five thousand dollars. However, the more matching funds a municipality can provide, it increases the chance of that municipality being awarded the grant. And the city of, city of Dillon will compete against every other municipality in the state of South Carolina for these funds, so it is a competitive grant. We're doing a number of things to make the grant application much more competitive. It's focused primarily for low to moderate income areas. That figure of percentage for Dillon is a little over fifty percent, about fifty-three percent. So what we've done is we've put boots on the ground, as some folks would say, and we've actually gone out and done surveys in this area. We are hoping that that percentage, and it's pretty much documented, I think Wanda, we're probably about ninety, close to ninety percent, that gives the city of Dillon, I'm working also for the city of Dalton, so please excuse me.
Don't work as hard.
We're not. And that's true, but I would tell the city of Dalton that, one, because we're not, we just got a grant for them, but because Wanda is actually from Dillon. So she has made very clear to me that this should definitely be a winning application. It's her hometown, she's put in extraordinary work and effort with us to make sure that we bring back a winning grant.
We're more for.
Again, the two lift stations are both in the northwestern neighborhoods within the city. One is off McKenzie Road, and the other one is off Highway thirty-four, being, I think we call that the Armory Pump Station locally. And in addition to upgrading those pump stations, one is thirty-seven years old, thirty-eight years old, the other one is more than forty-seven years old. The lifespan of these types of pump stations are normally about twenty-five to thirty years. So that's one of the justifications that we're riding in, why it needs to be replaced. And also, there's a four-inch horseman that services those communities. We're going to upgrade that four-inch horseman to a six-inch horseman, for a total of about one thousand nine hundred and ten linear feet of new increased piping that we're also going to put in. So upgrading two of those pump stations, and also bringing online an increased six-inch horseman. So that's basically the project itself. We've had to do two public hearings. One is a needs assessment hearing, as well as a grant application hearing to get involvement from the local community. We know over at the Wellness Center, we've had quite a bit of involvement. The community has been quite engaged in helping us get some of the needs assessments. I see some folks in the, in the audience today who've been helped, very helpful, so we do appreciate it. So far, Glenn and his staff has been extremely helpful, and it's been a delight to work for them, and we're hoping to bring home a win. The application's deadline is five o'clock this Friday in Columbia. We will actually hand deliver those. If it's one minute after five, they, they won't accept it. We have to submit six copies, plus one original copy, and then we have to provide a disc copy for them as well. So the resolution that hopefully you guys will pass this evening, that signed original has to be there. Glenn will be signing as the city manager on a number of other letters and documentations that has to bear the town's original signature as well. That's kind of an overview. Are there any questions that I may answer for you?
When do you expect to hear the results?
It usually takes about two months. I think that's a fair time, isn't it?
About two months. Can our local match the in-kind label or is it busy cash?
They will accept in-kind. Normally, it's cash, and if it's going to be in-kind, that has to be very detailed and very documented. With this application, we have not been able to secure or document any in-kind.
Have you got any questions? Best of luck to you.
Thank you.
The next question will ask the resolution.
With that being, that being your new business.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. I have two more items. I laid it on your counter before you got in, I saw a letter from Rodney Baird, county administrator, to get started back the procedure of having a quarterly meeting with county councils, Lakeview, Lada, and Dillon, the city councils. This will be Monday, seventeenth, at BNC Restaurant at six o'clock, if you'd like to attend. You do need to let Mayor Glenn know if you're going, so we can let them know how many people are here for you. But that's Monday at six PM at BNC.
Speaking of meetings with the county, what about the trip that we're here for?
Just myself. That's on the twenty-fourth. But if you'll let Glenn know either tonight or tomorrow on that. The last thing we have, that we started here a few months ago, is bringing in the police department staff. Tonight, Chief David Lane has some folks he'd like to introduce. Tonight, we have Detective Flurner, hearing, amongst criminal investigations. We have Corporal Lori Tyler and Corporal Brian Jenner, I have both with me.
All been better.
Thank you. That's all I have now, all right. Maggie, welcome back. What you got?
I believe the preservation tax credit is on the record tonight.
And we changed that, two years, two preliminary years, eight after working, total ten.
Correct.
Which means your assessed value before you start working, the building stays flat for ten years.
Correct. Also, Glenn and I discussed about the percentages of input was originally at Columbia, it was fifty percent on residential, you had to put in fifty percent of the work, of the cost of the building, the taxes. And then on commercial, it was a hundred percent, and that's an awful lot. And I called Columbia, and they said we could make it whatever we wanted, except that it couldn't be any less than twenty percent. So Glenn suggested we make it twenty-five percent for residential and fifty percent for commercial.
Oh, the current assessed value.
Current assessed value, correct.
Now, I have talked to the county about them doing the same thing. So they passed one, I found out years ago, but nobody ever did these things. So I'd like to make it, see if they'll do it. And I talked to Richard Shaker, a text. He says he would support it. He didn't give me an official support on it, but he thinks it's a good idea. But I'd like to see the city, the county, and the schools personally, all have a uniform preservation tax credit, which would be wonderful. I mean, because frankly, with the city, it ain't much that's received. Put all those together, if we can do that.
So that's the criteria that we're, you're on a passing tonight.
County, maybe the schools have another stipulation, but they can't, we're not taking anything there. That's all the new business, old business?
That's an old, old business.
Anything else?
No.
There's no phones?
No.
You don't have a phone system there? Your phones, they're still out in the office too?
Hopefully this way.
They went to that digital phone system too.
They went to fiber optic out there and turn lines different from the rest of them. AT&amp;T says it's not their problem. The phone supplier says it's not their problem, but I think we've got AT&amp;T to say, oh, it is our problem. So I bet, it's always.
Okay. Services report, anything, anybody want to bring our attention out here? Thank y'all. Unfinished business orders, 1703, amending the preservation tax incentive ordinance that Maggie just discussed with us, which would be a little important for the county.
Make motion.
How second?
And that is with the changes that were speculated.
Is that what's happening?
Yeah.
I second. All the favor, opposed. New business resolution, resolution 1-17, authorized submission of the application by the city of Dillon for a CDV grant amount of 750,000 for a pump station.
Made it earlier, I'll make it again.
Second. Second, all the favor, opposed, hearing.
I want to talk about, I got several things I want to speak about now. When we have a big storm comes through, these business owners, I know they're in a low light area. The water can't drain off. And I guess, Hardy, I want to ask you with the storm drains, is there any way we can go underneath the road or anything to see if we got anything clogged in the storm drains to where we can see, might be an issue, we don't know? I mean, because, I mean, we've had this head to write downfalls, you know, rain. And I mean, it just kind of accommodates for these businesses and getting the waters going into their business.
The storm drains are undersized, the storm. And that's why I want drains fixed. You get a big downpour rain, nowhere for it to go. 15 years ago, we did a study on that. It's about $20 million fix. But once again, and I hate to, not saying we're passing a book, those are highway department storm drains. Storm drains is there to move water from the road. And we're in discussions with them to see what they can do to help us. And we try to clean catch basins. We try to unstop as much as we can. But in all actuality, the liability falls actually back onto the highway.
Well, because we found a huskhead.
Hurting them.
So, so the city does.
We do some that we can't, yes. We do some that we can't. Because the states just, they don't have one to manpower, nor do they have the equipment. When our back truck went down during the hurricane, I called our local highway department, says, y'all got a back truck? Maybe we can borrow it. We don't have it.
Well, how often are we going to the residential areas and we're cleaning out the storm drains and stuff?
Whenever we get the time. I mean, there's, there's so many catch basins that we don't, we can work them every day and not get them all in a year's time. Because, one, there's just so many. Two, I mean, that comes under burps jurisdiction and you've got three or four guys, one piece of equipment, it's, it's time consuming.
I got a call on one, it was buried.
Yeah. Yeah, we find those a lot. Absolutely. I had talked with the state, I don't know, November, December, I've been January, after we got pretty much everything cleaned up to see if we could do something jointly in areas where we knew we had problems. And we're still waiting.
And nobody's preventing where you live to check your own.
Absolutely. I mean, here's, here's one of the, here's the main issues with storm drains. And, and I think we've talked about this before. We allow people to put little limbs and leads on the roadway. Where does that go when it rains? It goes in storm drains. There are some people who take the initiative to have a storm drain that fronts their yard that actually keeps it clean. They do that. Like I said, there's just so many. We can't do it on a daily basis and still do other things. But the one biggest issue is, they are undersized, without a doubt. Those things have been in the ground probably seven years. To be quite frank with you. So it's something we're trying to work on. I'm one that got flooded during the storm. My storm drain stays clean, but you know how deep my catch basin is, it's beside my house? That deep. Not because it's full. It's just it's low and that's how deep it is. So you're not going to get a lot of water out. Yeah. Across the street, the tile that runs in, in this yard across the street, the top of the tile is at the level of the ground. Just because that's how, how low it is. I mean, it's, we're built in a swamp and we're playing.
But had a big tournament out there at the reg field this past weekend. I'm curious. I mean, it was packed. You couldn't even park. What does the city of Dillon get from the tournament you hold down there?
We get 125 dollars per field, per day. So if they use all four, which I think they did, that's what, 500 dollars.
Is there any way to increase that fee?
Sure there is. Y'all, you have to do that.
I mean, I know they pay 10 to 20,000 dollars.
But I can tell you, if you increase it, they won't come.
They're charging 7 dollars a person to get in.
But I mean, that's, that's y'all's call. Sure you can. The, whatever organization that rents our field. We get, we get, they'll go, hopefully go to eat, you know, do some money. So yeah, we get 125 dollars per day. But I mean, we can increase it.
I just was asking, I was just curious, because I mean, it was so packed out. It was 7 dollars a person to get in, so.
What other, what other places charge? Some don't charge anything. Because they want them there. They want them to use the restaurants, stay in the hotels, the motels, things of that nature. But we're not the Myrtle Beaches or the North Myrtle Beaches.
I was just curious. I'll ask you last month, and I'll ask Chief Lane about the pay, you know, you didn't say pay bands or whatever or anything to that nature, but if a whole pay grade, budget years comes, is anything, any traction started on?
We had talked about it and, and once again.
I know the retirement thing.
That's going to be how we are handled increases, what that final number's going to be. Because I don't remember the actual, the actual dollar amount out of the police department on a yearly basis for payroll. Look right here.
Well, I just would like for you this year, if the council could have an opportunity to at least meet a couple times on the budget, to see if we, I mean, I think Dr. Wallace has got to be, you know, he wants to know about the appreciation for all this stuff. It just gives us time to hash out things instead of at the last minute. If we can do it, you know, if you can get us some proposal, we can.
Well, right now, I'd like to meet at least the first Monday in June prior to the second reading. And if we can squeeze one in May, we can do that in May also. We spent about a million dollars, is that what you said, Jim? In salaries in the police department. So whatever 2% of a million would be the increase, whatever that is.
If I'm reading it right, yeah, on the accommodation tax, we're taking in more this year than we have the previous year.
We said accommodation, yeah?
Uh, am I reading it right? 70,000 dollars?
Yeah, we brought in 70,000.
70,000.
Okay, my question is, I know the county theater gets, you know, we have our committee and they set up, and the county theater, and there's some more to get the money. How do we implement somebody new trying to get some of the accommodation tax money? What do they need to do?
They need to write a letter requesting.
And we do that, we try to do that in May. They're later than June.
If they write the letter now, get it in to you before May, they have an opportunity to try to get some of the accommodation.
If it qualifies for the guidelines in the accommodation tax, but we have to make sure it qualifies before we can, you know, put it in.
If we give any money out that does not qualify, and then it goes to Columbia, to the, to that committee, because we have to file, we have to put you on what we're giving money to. If they determine that it does not qualify, we have to pay that money back to the state.
I just wanted to know how to go about trying to get some of the accommodation money. Okay. Benny, can you see if somebody can come and kind of do a little bit of touch of work and show me if it's starting to get a little bit of ice on them, you know, that can real chill? Any, any, they don't cook out, any restaurant that?
No, sir.
No, no other thing?
No.
Okay. Ms. Janet, I want to speak to you about the water bill tonight. Maybe I don't understand what's going on, and I wanted to ask you directly. We have a penalty after the 15th day. We charge our cook, you know, our citizens a penalty of 10%, whatever the bill is. Okay? If they come in, they pay the bill on the 18th of the month, we take on it, you know, get the penalty. Can they not just pay that monthly bill and be done and you can't, you know, and become current? They're not having to pay the, the.
The previous bill? The previous bill, whenever it was passed by council. Whenever the city bills out and we bill out towards the end of the month. By the time we bill out another day, if you have not paid your previous bill, you have to pay everything in full.
Yeah, I thought we did like the 60 days of cutoff, you have to come current, pay all your, plus the reconnection fee.
There's, there's no, we don't do a reconnection fee.
I thought we, we put that in place.
We do a 35 dollar fee on the first of each month if you have not paid your bill.
Yes. In other words, come the first of the month, let's just say April 1st, if you didn't pay March's bill, come April 1st, March is due, whatever we just mailed out to you, the end of March is due, plus that 35 dollars. Because the reason it's changed, remember, was people was dragging it out for about 60 days or so.
I just didn't know if they become current within the 60 days, they'd have to pay the two bills, you know.
Now, once you, once you get your, your bill, you've got a pass due on it. The only way you can become current is when you pay what's due. Everything is due.
That's all I got.
I just want to thank all the volunteers that are stepping up to the plate and working you on the downtown revitalization.
I would say.
Yeah. At the city. And I'm excited about that. I think there's great potential there, but it's going to take them to get involved downtown. In fact, we need to thank all of the people that serve on our different boards and commissions. They do it as volunteers. We sometimes I think we take it for granted, but we do appreciate it.
My neighbor who crossed the street, Dr. Wong gave, had a busted motor right, he stopped and saw it. I think he was at the meter. And Hardy came by real fast. He appreciated that. Once Hardy said it's on his side. Hardy's got other things. And next day, it bust on my knee, just like the one, boom, gone. I thought it was a check valve. And they got there fast, three trucks. And I heard one whistle and, oh, it's on his side. I heard. I appreciate y'all coming, fellas. I'll get my plumber out here tomorrow. I'll get it myself. Y'all get on your way. And everyone said, what on earth? We probably should have cut you back off so you could take a shower instead of bucket, carry buckets of water there all night. What do you do with a 75-year-old lady that doesn't have a whole lot of disposable income, can't find a plumber? I mean, y'all have any, I mean, are you persistent with everybody? I mean, I know that's a tough call.
Pretty much. Sometimes it's kind of hard.
And the reason we can't.
Or the other side, on the commercial side, doing the, making sure.
It's tough.
It is tough.
Yeah, from a commercial side, you know, they're in the business. And they, we don't do as much to them as much as we will do for a resident. But at the same time, going on private property is another. We, we try to help where we can.
I know you do. Yeah, you do.
It's just, I know it's, you know, it's just one of those things that gets out of your control. But at the same time, we've always, I guess if you've got something that's a five-minute fix, even if it's on their side, you do it. But then, so I left, said, oh, that was a check valve, that was the city. But I did it, and that's what, you know, what it should be doing. But I was just curious. I love buckets back and forth to let them thirst. Which a Wimble's yard, he don't have to look for.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Thank y'all for coming.
Before you leave, I need one thing signed.